All right, it is five thirty P M. And the Planning Zoning Commission Meeting for Thursday, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one is in session. So would you all please stand with me for the invocation? Trini, could you help me, please?
Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to come together and to discuss the growth and progress of our city. Let us have clarity of mind and thought. Let us do all things pleasing unto you in Jesus's name, amen.
We be seated. All right, is there anyone in the audience today that has questions or discussion or anything to ask or consult with this commission about other than what is on our tonight's agenda? Anybody here with any other, anything besides tonight's agenda that you want to speak to us about? No, then we will move on. Action item number four point one, discuss and consider a final plat for Folly Farm, Lot one, two, and three, Block one, being twenty-nine point ninety-nine acres out of the William R. Spencer survey, abstract number four ninety-one, City of Terrell, E T J Kaufman County, Texas. Also known as one four six three eight Quail Lane. Mr. Fenner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Good evening. Before you, you do have a final plat that's in our E T J. And as usual, I let you know that we have no zoning authority in the E T J for lot size or use or anything. So we just have subdivision authority, and so that's why it's before you now. The property is, consists of three lots, twenty-nine acres total. You can see the two pieces that are being carved out up front. They're about one point six acres apiece. And then the remainder is about twenty-six acres. So what we're requiring from the plat, as far as its approval, is that the plat dedicates the forty-foot right-of-way access easement along Quail Lane. And that is it. So it's pretty simple. So y'all have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Fenner? Any discussion about this? All right, if there are no questions and no discussions, then I will, I will open for a motion, please.
Let's make a motion that we recommend approval for this F P twenty-one dash thirteen, which is the final plat for Folly Farms, Lot one, two, and three, Block one, being twenty-nine point nine-nine acres over the William S. Spencer survey, abstract number four ninety-one, City of Terrell.
All right, I have a motion to, to recommend approval for this final plat. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And this carries. All right, action item number four point two for F P twenty-one dash fourteen. Discuss and consider a final plat for Crossroads at Terrell, Phase Three C, Lot one, Block one, being fourteen point one-eight-nine acres out of the John C. Hale survey, abstract number two oh two, City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the Gilcrest property or one of them. This is for the Chevy dealership, Cadillac dealership that they're building. I know that it's probably hard to remember. We've dealt with this several times, just simply because of the two properties and the actual specific use permit that we had to, to put on the property. So the specific use permit was approved on the twenty-fifth of August, two thousand twenty. It was amended in June of two thousand twenty-one to include the twelve additional acres that he was going to have the two separate dealerships on. And then amended again in September, just last month, to create the maximum seventy-five thousand square foot per building of the property. The, the reason that all happened, the amendment that y'all dealt with, was just because when they came to amend it, they were trying to amend it based on one lot. And so it got a little confusing, so we did get that approved and taken care of through council. A final plat on this property was done back in July of two thousand twenty. And it basically essentially served as a conveyance plat for Mr. Gilcrest to purchase, so he could purchase the property and allow him to start the process. And so we knew at that time when he did the final plat, we had the, an agreement that there would be no development and he would have to start the whole process over because he was just doing this to transfer the ownership. And so now before you, you have the final plat. The, there was a construction plat, I back up, a construction plat that was approved for this property. And that was taken care of. And so now before you, they're do, they're submitting the final plat. Now, the public improvements are not done. And so we're going to have a guarantee for the public improvements through a surety bond and a letter of credit in order, in order for this to be approved. They want, they need the final plat approved, just like we went through with the Ford dealership and the Dodge dealership because of the, the dealership's requirements. And so they need to get building permits and sign permits and so forth. So, so before you, we recommend this final plat of Crossroads, Terrell, Phase Three C, Lot one, Block one, being fourteen point one-eight-nine acres. And the, approving the plat will serve as a document needed to obtain a building permit. The public improvements will need to be guaranteed by a letter of credit and surety bond, and we're working through that right now. So that would be your recommendation.
Okay. So we have Mr. Fenner's explanation of this. I think we've seen something similar to this in the past. Do any of you have questions or discussion about this? At all? All right, if not, then I will entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of the final plat, Crossroads, Terrell, Phase Three C, Lot one, Block one, being fourteen point one-eight-nine acres out of the John C. Hale survey, abstract number two zero two, City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas. And with all the documents needed to attain the building permit and the things that Mr. Fenner also mentioned for the credit and surety bond, all that be included.
All right. I have a motion to recommend approval to the City Council for F P twenty-one dash fourteen. Do I hear a second? I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
All right, this is carried. Action item number four point three. Conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider a planned development, single-family, seven point five, which is P D S F dash seven point five, base zoning on five tracks totaling one hundred ninety-seven point oh-two acres of land and of, out of the John C. Hale survey, A dash two oh two, City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas. Before we, before we begin with this, I feel sure there probably will be some discussion or questions about this, about this. And I believe there's some, some folks here that's going to give us some information. So, Mr. Fenner, I would, I would like for you to, to introduce these people to us, give us introduction to this, and then introduce these folks to us. And then we will open the public hearing after they've spoken. That way we can have, we can have a good understanding of what's going on.
I'll just give you a little introduction here. This particular piece of property is there on the corner of Rose Hill and twenty. You can see there on your screen, all that area in red. And so you can see that there's a east, a west to east or west to southeast, I guess, flow there. That's one forty-eight on the, the west side and then Rose Hill on the east side. This consists of five separate tracks, one hundred ninety-four acres. And as you know, the, there's several acre, several, there's a hundred acres or so of property out of that one hundred ninety-four, I think it's a hundred and ten to be exact, in the floodplain. We started working with Mr. Peavy, Strachan, Kim Lee Horn. I forgot how many months ago. It's been, it's been a good while. We started off with the residential project with the preserve and liked the concept and we started going forward and looking at it. And then went through some time and then we were trying to look at possibly doing some other type of development off of one forty-eight to have just a separate piece for a business park for separate entrance and have some different connection in there for residential towards the Rose Hill area. However, that, that didn't pan out and it just wasn't going to work. And so we've gotten to this point over the last several months of working together with this, this development. So just to run down, this is going to be a P D seven point five base zoning. There's a hundred ninety-seven acres just south of the Windsor Avenue extension. As y'all know, the Windsor Road extension will be happening from the Rose Hill Estates on the north side. This will be east of Rose Hill. The Rose Hill Estates will be building a portion of Rose, Windsor and the Woodlands will be building a portion so that, that Windsor Road will extend. Well, the, the plan is to have Windsor Road extended all the way to one forty-eight. This particular development will have a chunk of that Windsor Road connecting on one forty-eight on site and as part of their construction, they'll be, they'll be, as part of their development, there'll be construction of portion of that. So just to get your bearings there a little bit. So anything not addressed in this overlay will just, will just fall onto the seven point five zoning district. So there are approximately a hundred and ten acres of the hundred ninety-four acres in the floodplain. So it's close to sixty percent of the property. Obviously, we're going to, going to exercise the, anything we can do with this natural vegetation, just like we did with the Woodlands. So there'll be a natural tree canopy across in that area, twenty area. There will be an eight-foot hike and bike trail that'll come across through, starting at the Windsor area. It'll come all the way through to the Rose Hill. And as you know, the Woodlands will have the same thing. They will have a hike and bike trail both on the frontage road and on through, through their property. So we'll have a full connection eventually from, from the one forty-eight all the way to the new Rockwall, Rockwall Southern Extension down to the frontage road. And at that point, you could even go north up through the Woodlands into the Rose Hill Estates, into the elementary school and come up north into town. So it's a great, these are two great projects working that way. It'll consist of three different pods, residential pods, and you'll see those in, in just a minute. They're, they'll be diverse and unique in, in several different ways. It'll have a community amenity area, playground and pool and clubhouse for the residents. The H O A will be maintaining that. There will, there, there will also be a fifty-foot buffer along Rose Hill Road. There's going to be an additional thirty-foot added, so that'll be a really nice entrance as you're coming in and you'll see some renditions of that along that area for quality upgrade. We will also include a streetscape, specific area utility planning and street, tree planting somewhat like we did with the Woodlands. They'll be submitting to staff, to myself, for approval as part of their plating process. In fact, we'll have a pedestrian plan, pedestrian and streetscape plan submitted as a packet separately if this goes through. So yes, we talked about the nice entryways and the development, Rose Hill Road, and then the Windsor Avenue. Along that, you'll have berms and soft vegetation around that whole property and like I said, additional thirty-foot there. There'll be a minimum of two recreation ponds on the site. And so the development standards that'll be in the ordinance that have been proposed and we have talked about several times back and forth will be somewhat unique. I think one thing to, we, we really, to keep some simple, keep it simple is that to think about a lot of the exterior side, the exterior elevations of the property will be eighty percent front elevation of brick and stone and then the remaining sides, twenty percent combination. And that will be, that will be for the residential units. A part of this section of this, for the cottages, will be a gated, age-restricted area that will have a different concept for siding and so forth, and that'll be spelled out in the development standards. So in your, in your first pod, and I'm not going to take too much time, so they'll have a little bit of time to speak. But you'll have basically a mixture up in your enclave side. You'll have a mixture of seven point five, fifty percent, seven point five lots and fifty percent four point five lots. Minimum square footage houses will be eighteen hundred square foot and fifteen hundred as they're corresponding to the, the size of the lot. And then we'll have, we'll move into the restricted community part. There'll be a maximum acreage of twenty-two acres for this. There'll be the cottages. And they will have the front porch facade, just like in the other one, they'll, they'll meet the standards of the seven point five. And in, in this, in this area, they'll have twenty-five percent of the facade with covering porch there too, with some other little standards that they'll have. So they'll have the, those, those cottages will be proposed to be at eleven hundred square foot minimum. Then the brownstones, which will be up close, the, these will be a maximum acreage of a seven, seven and a half acres at that area. Cover porch is twenty percent in that area. And those are fourteen hundred square foot minimum dwelling areas. And so if we look at, so I'm throwing all this out, you look at probably about eighty-something acres of developable land and the rest being in the floodplain and the new traditional neighborhood where this, this low is fallen into, on the map there, you can see the new traditional neighborhood in the orange brownish area. That has a lot of different characteristics. And one of the characteristics are, are the trails and the parks. Another characteristic is some of the higher density, four to eight units per acre. If we can see, if we calculate total acreage, you're looking at a lot less dense than that, at two, probably three. If you're, if you take out some of the floodway and, and do some things, you have some probably around six units. But we're looking at this from maximum acreage at this point, maximum acreage of each pod to develop with certain standards. So I'm not going to get into any of the pictures or anything like that. This is, this is something that they need to do to get up here and talk with you a little bit about. Right now, as it stands, if this were to get approved, we would be going, you know, the next steps, and I always like to, I always like to talk about that. There's going to have to be some form of developers agreement to return probably some impact fees for the portion that they build of the Windsor Road up there. And so with that, within that developers agreement, there's, there could be some other exchanges too. And then, of course, after that, there'd be a construction plan submittal. We'd probably deal, deal with this as a phased pot approach too. And we can figure that out of how we have to have our engineering. We'll probably do some preliminary engineering and then some real engineering, I guess, as it pertains to each of these pods that would come through. So there may be several steps after we get the, you know, the entitlement goes through of how we want to really develop this. And we'll just have to look at the, the way we want to proceed with it. Then, of course, the, the public improvements, things will be built or, or things will be escrowed for, for guarantee, for performance, for those things to be taken care of. So that's the typical process in the development. We don't have a developers agreement working right now, as we did these other projects and it's extended Windsor Road, the full portions and some other things and extended Rockwall and stuff like that. We had had developer agreement incentives and repays, repayments back already working. So at this point, we're not there. We do know that we'd have to have some kind of agreement when we're talking about the repayment of impact fees. So you can see here in front of you, the map, I think it's a very unique development and attractive. Got the east and west corridor. And once that's built, obviously, that'll keep everything outside of this, most of everything outside of this subdivision. And it gives the opportunity for the enjoyment of all the stuff that they'll have down there. And so I'll let them get into a little more of the details and then I'll be back for any questions you might have, if that's okay, or do you want me to?
That's fine, yeah.
So I'm going to introduce, this is Kim Lee Horn. I don't know who wants to speak. Come on up, Kim Lee Horn, and then the owners, and y'all just go ahead and give your name.
Mr. Horn, if you would, please. We, typical, the typical amount of time for a proposal like this is ten to twelve minutes. So if you guys, not ten, twelve minutes per person, but as, if you could, if you could do that with us.
And I appreciate the opportunity to be before y'all tonight. Thank you, Chair and Chair and Commissioners. My name is Thomas Fletcher with Kim Lee Horn. And I appreciate Charles, the, the presentation and kind of giving an overview of the project. We've been working with city staff on this for several months now and have got a lot of good input and feedback. And I guess, are you handling the? All right, thanks, Myra. If we can keep going through, the first slide really is just kind of showing the site. And Charles has already kind of gone through where it's located. The existing zoning on it is agricultural. The next slide, please. The, the proposed future land use is traditional neighborhood and new traditional neighborhood. And really, our P D is really trying to incorporate a lot of those elements so that it is compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. Here's again, it's a kind of an overview of the site. It shows that we're to the, to the west or south, you know, to the west of Rose Hill, to the, to the east of one forty-eight, south of the future Windsor Avenue extension and north of, of I twenty. Hundred ninety-four acres total and as Charles mentioned, about a hundred and ten acres is located currently in the floodplain. So the other part of that is there's floodplain that cuts across. So the floodplain's on the southern portion of the track, but it also kind of bisects through the middle. There's a north-south section of floodplain that comes through as well, and you can see that on the concept plan. So when we were looking at this track, we tried to, you know, we're trying to look at it and kind of come up. It's a really unique, it's a beautiful track. There's a lot of natural areas. We knew that we needed to try and create a transportation connection and corridor over from one forty-eight over to Rose Hill. The Windsor Avenue extension is currently on the mobility plan. There's already some right-of-way in place. So that makes kind of a natural connection from one forty-eight over to the northern portion of this track. And then as we looked at the track, because of the floodplain and kind of the natural features of the track, it kind of really lent itself to, to, to create really three different, separate and distinct pods, is what we typically call them. So we created the enclave, which is really your traditional, single-family detached. The cottages, which is our age-restricted, so that would really be, it would be geared or it would require that, that it would be, you know, fifty-five and older and meet all those requirements. And then we had the brownstones, which is, you know, more of a little bit higher density townhome type product right there at Rose Hill. In some of the discussions, because Rose Hill is going to be our entry, we really talked about how we wanted to make that entry look. We wanted to have nice, beautiful buildings on that front facade. We wanted to pull those buildings off of Rose Hill, so we had a nice landscape buffer. We wanted to have the ability to create, create nice rolling berms in there so that we could have a sidewalk that kind of meanders in and out of those berms and have tree plantings and just have this really nice open space along this transportation corridor and as you turn and enter into the subdivision. And we've got some slides that'll go through that. We also, you know, the park is very important to us in, in taking advantage of this preserve. So we have the eight-foot trail from the eastern, going from the east at Rose Hill all the way to the west of the development and with two of these nice large ponds. So as, the next step in this process is we'll have to go through and do a detailed drainage study. And as we do that, that's where we incorporate the ponds and we're able to create those nice amenity ponds. And those will be wet ponds, so they'll have a water, a normal water surface elevation at all times of the year. So over time, you know, those will be nice amenities for the community. They can go and, and fish in those ponds and walk around them and it'll, it'll just be a nice feature for that development. Here's the, the entry that we're talking about. There's the brownstones. We've limited those units on, on the buildings facing Rose Hill to no more than four units in a building. The, the architecture we're showing there is enhanced architecture. We've got in the P D written in there, minimum material standards, and that includes eighty percent masonry on the, the front facade. And we did the eighty because a lot of these buildings, you like to have architectural elements that, that kind of accent and, and kind of lend to and enhance the look. And having that ability to kind of utilize some other materials was important to us as well. But as you can see, the, we've got the berms there. So when you turn into the development, we've got a nice divided entry, a boulevard that has nice landscaping. We have to the south of that entry road, we have a nice monument so that it's a sense of arrival coming into the preserve at Rose Hill. One of the things that's in the P D is the flexibility. When we met with the city and we're kind of talking about the entry from Rose Hill, there is a stipulation in there where, based on traffic warrants and safety and all that, if that connection makes more sense to be on the north side of the brown, of the brownstone project, then there's some flexibility there and that would be worked through with the city. But currently, as, as designed or as planned, we have it on the south side. But this just kind of gives you an idea of the overall entry into the development. Here's some pictures and some of these pictures, like the one on the, on the south, doesn't meet the masonry standard that we've established for the development. But we wanted to show it because it shows the porches, it has accent columns, it has other architectural features that may end up getting incorporated into the buildings, even though in that particular picture, it doesn't meet the masonry standards. But this is the type of, of look and feel that we're trying to go for when we enter that building. The other thing that's unique about the brownstones is that they're, the majority of the buildings would be muse. So when you walk out your front door, instead of walking out to a, a street right-of-way, you would walk out into a landscaped open space. So you're, you know, you're walking out into this area that creates community. You can, you know, you can visit and, and meet with your neighbors and it just has a really nice feel and it's kind of a unique development or unique part of this development. The cottages, as I mentioned, the cottages within the P D, it's age-restricted, so it would be fifty-five and older. It would be a gated community. So within the development standards, it requires that it would be gated for safety. It's, it's intended to be low maintenance. So the, within the development, the, the way the H O A or the, the association would be, would be that the maintenance of the yards, because they're smaller in nature, it's more open feel internal, but with the overall gated community, that maintenance aspect would be covered as part of the project. So, but these are kind of the, the images of kind of the look and feel. You can see the, the porches there, the nice porches. As Charles mentioned, the minimum square footage on these is eleven hundred. And really, we're trying to cater towards that, that age-restricted where, you know, people are downsizing, they want less maintenance. They want smaller houses that they maintain and upkeep. So that's really the, you know, the, what we're trying to create with the cottages. Here's another picture of, of an example of a muse. So the cottages are designed with, with a muse as well. So when you open your front door, you walk out onto a green space or a lawn that has a sidewalk that connects all of these together, which allows for a lot of, you know, passive or active recreation, trails, walking, those types of things. The Rose Hill, the preserve at Rose Hill Park. Uh, the Rose Hill, the preserve at Rose Hill Park, here's some images of, of the park, uh, how the park would be created and what it would look like when finished. There would be a lot of preservation of open space, a lot of tree preservation, the natural creek. Uh, you would have the, the two retention ponds that would be created along with the sidewalks that would, uh, meander in and out around the ponds and create a nice, a nice community park for the, for the residents. The, the preserve would have its own amenity center. Uh, Charles mentioned there'd be an amenity center, a pool and a playground, uh, and these are just some images that kind of show that. It would be, the, the regulations establish that it would be a minimum of one acre in size and it would have the restrooms, the pool and the, and the playground. So really, I mean, it, that's kind of the, the images and kind of an overview of the development. We wanted to create a, a nice, diverse, um, development that had a diversity of housing, a diversity of, of residents that have the opportunity to live here. We wanted to create a sense of community. We wanted to kind of separate and create the own individual pods for each different product type. The enclave, which is your traditional, single-family detached, is in the back of the development. It's more secluded, it's more, um, you know, set aside by itself. And then as you move, uh, closer to Rose Hill, the little bit more dense product is, you know, is introduced with the cottages and then with the brownstones. Uh, so really, that's, that's kind of an overview of the, of the proposed PD. Uh, we do have the, the building materials and all these different attributes and amenities as part of the community. They're included in the PD document, so they would become part of the regulation, so it would be a requirement of the developer to meet those. Um, I'm here also representing the developer is, is Mr. Bill Peavy and Mr. Neil Ackerman. They're with Cloud Loft Investments. And my project manager is Brandon Lawing. He is here as well. Um, I think they were gonna allow me to give the presentation and answer any questions that you may have. That's really the presentation we prepared tonight. We appreciate the ability to be here and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about our proposed development.
Do you have a builder, um, in mind that would be your builder? Or do you have several builders that will build the homes?
We don't have a builder at this time and I know, um, you know, I know we've had discussions with city, that, with the city staff about the quality of homes and buildings that the city, and that's really, that's kind of a lot of the reason why we put the building materials in here to kind of ensure the quality. So at this time, we don't have any builders that we've talked to. Um, I think, you know, typically our step would be, you know, hopefully, uh, we get y'all's recommendation for approval, we get city council approval, and then at that point, we would get into more details and then start talking to the builders and see what builders would be able to come in and develop at these standards, uh, with this quality and, and go through that selection process at that time. But we haven't had discussions with builders at this time.
I have a couple of questions. On the green areas that are in front of the, in front of the homes.
Yes, sir.
Um, so who, who is going to maintain that, that yard?
Right. So there would be, uh, in the cottages and the brownstones, there would, because they're such, they're smaller areas and the, and the muse really act as an open space for all, that would be a part of the homeowners' association. So it would be set up. Now, the enclave, which is a traditional detached, that would be each resident's responsibility to, to maintain their own front and backyard. You would see more traditional homes there, um, with either front or side entry. You would have, you know, fenced-in rear yard, so in that, in that pod, it would be the homeowner, but within the cottages and the brownstones, there would be HOA maintenance associated with those.
And it looks like, uh, Sam, your south border of this property looks to be following a creek or something.
Yes, sir, it does.
So, but there's a wooded area between your actual, where you're gonna develop the houses and, and the creek. So is there a, is there a, is that an open area or a wooded area?
So if we could go to the concept plan?
Where the red, uh, thing was outlined.
So the red line is the property line. Everything in green is preservation of the existing trees, the creek, uh, and the natural topography. Where, where you see kind of, there's a light blue kind of dash line that runs kind of along the road and along the edge of the green, that's kind of, that's the, what we consider kind of the project limits. Now, within the open space, we'll get in there and we'll dig the, the ponds and create the amenity ponds. Um, and then our intent on the trail is, and we have to go out and survey and design everything, but usually what we like to do on those trails to, to create really a natural feel is to have those trails kind of run along that natural topography and then have them kind of go into the treat area and come back out. And then eventually, uh, they'll kind of converge with the internal streets and then go around the, the retention ponds. Did that, did that answer your question?
Well, it does. The, the thing that I'm really concerned about was, I don't know, I've, I've raised in the country, so anytime you have a creek and water flowing, you have, you have trash flowing through and you have trees falling across and you have brush that grows up and it's more of a, it's more of a thicket, like a impassable thing than something that would actually be enjoyed. So I'm just wondering if there's any maintenance designated for that, for that green area?
Yeah, there, there is maintenance dedicated for the green area. And normally what we would do is where the, normally because a lot of that natural area is natural habitat and because it is such a large area, we would leave a lot of that area along the southern in its natural, in its natural state. Now, if there's a situation where, uh, there's a tree or something that's going and it's affecting the, the flow of water and it's a maintenance issue, then it would have to be removed so that, you know, so that the natural flow of water could, could continue without causing issue. Um, so along the kind of edge, around the pond, around the trail, there would be regular maintenance. There would be crews going out there, mowing, picking up trash and debris, picking up limbs, things of that nature. So the, the most active and used areas of that park will be maintained on a regular basis. And then you would have this more natural habitat that would remain in its natural state unless something major would require, um, someone to go in there and do some maintenance.
Okay, and I should know this, but I'll, since I don't, I'll ask. So, south of the creek between, between this property and Interstate twenty, is that, does that property belong to you as, or?
No, sir, it does not. The, the bottom red line is the limits of this property and you can, like, as you pointed out, um, earlier, is that you can see that when the property was subdivided, it looks like, you know, at some point in time, they broke off the property north of the creek and they used the centerline of the creek kind of as the, as the defining limits, 'cause you can see there's a lot of property points in there and it just kind of follows the, the creek. But no, we do, we are not the, the developer or property owner south of that property line.
I have a question. Um, on these two retention ponds that you're talking about that are in the floodplain area?
Yes, ma'am.
Would that be enough to hold back any excessive flooding or did you have to do any retention walls in addition?
So, yeah, so we, we did some preliminary studies with our, we call it our H&amp;H group, which is hydrology and hydraulics. And basically, based on their initial, uh, analysis, this is what they said. So when you start shaping the existing floodplain line to make it more developable, if you fill any areas within the floodplain, you also have to cut an equivalent area so that you don't cause a rise in the water surface and create flooding. And then also, because we're doing development and that development has more impervious surface, you're gonna get more runoff, so we have to account for that. So the, the retention ponds also serve to detain water so that we don't release more water downstream and cause any flooding. So, so we would have a full, detailed study as part of our submittal to the city that shows that this project is gonna cause zero impact downstream and there wouldn't be any flooding.
Any other questions?
Do you, um, are you thinking about any fire protection features, like fire hydrants, fire sprinklers in the homes and?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So the, the, the different category of, of homes and sizing, there's, the, the international fire code governs that. So all the adopted codes that are adopted by the City of Terrell will have to be followed. And generally, when you have multiple buildings, if you've got over, I believe it's six thousand square foot or greater under roof, you have to have a sprinkler system. So we would follow all of that. Um, I, I believe the fire hydrant spacing is typically one fire hydrant every five hundred feet. So there would be water lines within all the roads and infrastructure, there would be fire hydrants typically at every corner, street corner or intersection. And then if you have a long, uh, street without any connections, you would have fire hydrants generally every five hundred feet. So it would be designed to, to meet fire, current fire protection standards. Um, so it is, it is going to be designed to meet all those requirements and that's, that's important to us, it's important to the builders. Um, when people are going to get, um, mortgages for homes, if it doesn't meet certain criteria, then it can affect their ability, you know, if they're, if they're using a lender versus, you know, paying outright for the, for the house. So absolutely, it would have fire protection.
On the cottage pod, um, being that it's more for the elderly, um, what does parking look like since you're talking about not having access from vehicle to front door?
So the, the, all the units will have two-car garages, so there would be, um, two, uh, in, in, you know, undercover garage parking. And then within the development, we would also have parking, uh, for guests and visitors, uh, internal to the gated area. So anytime you design a gated community, uh, you have to have a turn, you know, you have to have parking or a turnaround, there's a, there would be a call box, so a visitor would come up, they would use the call box, uh, the, the, you know, the resident would allow them in, you know, access. And then we would have visitor parking internal to that for them to park at in order to go see their guest.
I was just thinking about being, the access from the front doors, being elderly people visiting other elderly people, the difference.
Yeah, and, and we, we've been working on different concepts and we, earlier we were calling them kind of six-packs because we were kind of creating little areas of six cottages. And then that way, it, what it does is it keeps the distance from parking and street access to the front doors a lot shorter. So when we lay that out, we take that into consideration to make sure that we're not, you know, someone's having to park and walk, you know, a quarter of a mile or something, especially because it's age-restricted and, and, uh, and it's gonna be designed in a manner that shorter walking paths and, and, you know, to, to accommodate that.
Anyone else?
And the enclave pod is the, um, what is the proposed lot width that you're considering?
So we have fifty percent have to meet the SF seven point five, so that's seventy-five foot wide. And then fifty percent can be what's the SF four point five, which is forty-five, which is the same as what's in the woodlands. So it's a very similar, um, it's a, it, the smaller lot is very similar to what's in the woodlands and then the larger lot meets the requirements of your SF seven point five. So it's a minimum seventy-five foot wide lot. And that's a lot that's wide enough that allows for if the builder wants to do a swing garage, you know, generally if you wanted to do a swing garage versus front entry, you need a minimum of about sixty-five to seventy feet. So the seventy-five foot wide lot would allow for some diversity of product in there.
Any other questions? No?
Thank you, sir. Uh-huh. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
So before you, uh, you have a PD, uh, with our, our general pod lay, layout and development, uh, with the development standards. We know, uh, uh, with the exception of just real lot layout, uh, is really the only thing missing here, but just like you were asking about fire prevention and, and the residential section will do the one to two, uh, like two hundred foot, fire hydrants have to be there, but that'll all be done during the plating process. And that's kind of what I mentioned earlier is that we'll probably end up handling this as creating, if this, this goes through, we would, we would handle this, uh, the next submittal, uh, as a construction plat of the overall development, laying out, uh, uh, the, the different phases of what they'll be. And then in, in, like the enclave, and if it's into one phase or two phases, and then, uh, would come back later when we're developing those phases and maybe go through another construction plat process and a final plat process, uh, just simply the way the development is. And so, uh, but, but I think you, you've seen here, I think that, um, these guys have put, uh, a lot of effort into it. We've, we've put a, a lot of effort into it and probably been pretty mean, uh, at some point. Um, you know, when we're looking at things and you look at, you know, cottage-style type homes, uh, and, and things like that and these small little houses and, uh, you get a little worried 'cause you're, you're thinking, man, we really wanna see something bigger. But when you start looking at the overall concept and you look at the muse and all this, uh, those are very attractive opportunities for us to, to, to create a, you know, sustainable development within itself and it's a hundred and ninety-four acres and really create some added value through all the, the preservation and the trail system and just the diversity of homes and, and things like that. So I think, you know, as we got closer, uh, to where we needed to be with just the extra features and the berms and the things that you would see pulling up, that's, that's a huge deal. Uh, you don't just turn the corner and you're just turning into a street that has houses right there on the corner. You're actually pulling into a, a boulevard-style type development with fifty-foot of buffer and you have screening and, and, uh, uh, just a lot of extras there and a lot of great quality. So quality's not always in the lot, quality a lot is into the creation, uh, and being creative of what you're doing. And the way this is laid out, for one, uh, there's not a ton you can do south of that area anyhow on a hundred and ninety-four acres, a hundred acres, uh, in the floodplain. So, uh, I commend these guys for really getting after it and, and really addressing a lot of our concerns, uh, of really, really tapping into the quality feature that we wanna bring. Uh, we don't want just simple. Could be, it would be one thing if they just had these three different pods, but if, you know, if they were just three separate pods that were just kind of simple and nothing really added to them, you know, that would be the boring part and the not a curb appeal part and not the market that we wanna hit. Uh, and so, uh, we do have, uh, we do, staff does recommend approval of, of the planned development as submitted and, uh, there are a couple of things that we would like to work through with, with them between now and council on some language, but it's very, uh, it's just something that we'll just have to look and see how we can address that. And that would probably be for the, the term, the verbiage they use for the term of the, the senior, uh, the, the restricted, uh, we, we know we have a huge market. We know we have a huge market for the senior, a very good senior community. Uh, and I don't think there's gonna be any problem with probably selling those things two to one, uh, with our market. They're looking from here to, from Dallas to Tyler, they're looking everywhere. And if you have a little gated community, uh, and you have this opportunity and these amenities and things are being taken care of for you and you're surrounded by other types of diverse housing and, and things like that, this, this will be a really great market for that. Not to mention the fifty-fifty that we have over on the, the enclave side, uh, that's a good opportunity. And there is a big market for good quality of the brownstone, uh, piece. And so we, I think there's just enough space in there and just the, the right amount of acreage to, in those areas to be developed, uh, to not consume every bit of it, you know, uh, in one type of housing. So if the council, uh, commission so chooses to recommend, uh, approval of this, uh, planned development, we will take it on to council. Um, if you have any recommend date, if you'd like to recommend approval with some conditions, fine. Uh, if you don't wanna recommend that, you know how this all goes. But, uh, the next step is taking it to council. And, uh, we say that, uh, we are right in there with our, with our comprehensive plan, what we wanna do with it, uh, definitely with, like the, the green, uh, muse development and things like that. We really, uh, uh, work, work with these guys for a good while. So, uh, we recommend approval of the planned development. So we recommend approval of the planned development.
All right, sir, thank you. So this is a public hearing. This time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak in favor of this? No? Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in opposition to this planned development? No? Then I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion, questions? If no, then I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve agenda item number 4.3, planned development SF 7.5, 197.02 acres, the preserve at Rose Hill, PD 21-04, to the city council for their approval.
I have a motion to recommend approval of this planned development as presented. Do I have a second? Do I hear a second?
I have a second.
I have at least one second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. This is carried. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. We are going to adjourn.